Okay, good evening everyone. Thank you for attending the November 8th Planning Commission meeting. It is seven o'clock on the dot and I will ask Secretary DeBolt to take attendance for us, please.
Schenkel.
Present.
Mutcha.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Wartella.
Present.
Holmes.
Here.
Cox.
Present.
Newman. Not yet. And DeBolt.
Alright, next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I will call for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion by Wartella.
Second by Holmes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And Agenda Item Number Four, we are going to swear in a new member tonight and I understand the Village President, Mr. Frisbee, is going to share some words.
Well, I'd like to introduce to you, it came to me at six o'clock this afternoon when I saw the meeting, a reminder that it would be nice probably to introduce Tanya Delong to you all, if you don't know her. She was appointed by unanimous decision last Monday at the council meeting to take the place of Mr. Bill Hunt. So, she's got a long background and a long history, she's been twenty-seven year resident in the village and former planning and DDA representative, Chamber of Commerce Vice Chair. So, she's got experience, she's got a passion for this community. And you all are a good-looking bunch, but you're gonna get looking better really quick. So with that, Tanya, if you'd come up and we'll have Mr. Mallory swear you in.
Okay. If you can repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The ordinances of this village.
The ordinances of this village.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Planning Commission and Downtown Development Association Member.
A Planning Commission and Downtown Development Association Member.
In and for the Village of Vicksburg.
In and for the Village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo.
County of Kalamazoo.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Fantastic. And we'll get you to plug that with a signature. Fantastic. Now make sure that yourself and Doug get a copy as well. Alright?
Alright, thank you.
So on to Agenda Item Number Five, we have citizen comments. So per the village ordinance, if any citizen would like to speak, this is the time to address anything on the agenda. If you come forward, please state your name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak. So I will give us about ten or fifteen seconds and no motion, I will move forward. Seeing no motion from our crowd, and we do have a crowd here tonight, so thank you for attending. Anything on the online, are we, are we taking online?
We are live, you are live online and being viewed by multiple people right now.
Great, excellent. Alright, well, having no citizen comments here, present, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, approval of the minutes from our last meeting on October 11th. I trust that the Planning Commission has had time to review these minutes. Do you have any comments?
Did we get the minutes? Cause I didn't get them in my packet.
I don't have mine.
Minutes, we don't have minutes in our packet. We can't.
If that was, yeah, we can just reserve that for December.
For the December meeting, there are no minutes in the packets.
Alright, so we will approve those minutes in December, but we will need to have a motion to delay that approval until December.
This is DeBolt, I make a motion that we table the minute, table the minutes till December, what's the date on the December meeting?
Thirteenth.
December thirteenth.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor from Member DeBolt, we have support for that.
Manchester, I'll support it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seven, Village Manager Report, Mr. Mallory.
Yes, I'm gonna update, if you've been downtown, you've noticed quite a bit of concrete has gone into the sidewalks, the first color, and there's three different color combinations on Main Streets, the first color went in on about four sections of that. They will come, they'll put a top protectant on it as well. Today was mainly focused on Prairie where three intersections of Kalamazoo and Prairie were completed with the colored concrete. The topsoil was brought in on the other areas. Tomorrow, we will have, it's been confirmed that the asphalt company will come in and lay the base coat of asphalt on Main Street down to where the curbs are just north of Washington. They'll finish the park, parallel parking lane on Prairie in front of 101, 103 by the intersection of Main. They'll, across from Vickers, fill in the entryway to that parking lot and they'll also fill in down by the Speedway. Our goal is you, at the intersection of Washington and Main Street, the surveyor has outlined the curb radiuses there, so you'll see that begin to be prepped for the curb machine to come in next week, the week of the fifteenth, to continue the curbs into Washington with the radius of, of those streets. So, it's moving along, it is weather-wise in the bottom of the ninth inning, but we still, right now, are anticipating having a base coat of asphalt on Washington between Main Street and Michigan. Everything is, we will, and Alex will be giving a report on the Christmas in the Village that's moving forward. We know that we'll have an access to the entire parade route that has been traditionally done and we're confident that sidewalks will be in all along that parade route as well moving forward. So, I'll pause there if you have any questions. Some of the things, I don't know if I've updated the Planning Commission, I know that by electronic means that, that I send out to a group of internal and external stakeholders, but a decision was made that the trees and plantings will not be done until next spring. But I know there's a lot of questions that have come up, reference how many trees, so basically everywhere someone sees a grate in the sidewalks, there will be a mature tree planted there and then all the intersections will have plantings as well, but I'll pause and be happy to answer any questions.
President Schenkel, if I could. Jim, I'm just curious, first off, it's great news, it's good to see we're, we're getting there and even driving around the village, it's kinda nice to see the pieces coming together, so kudos to you and the team. Just curious, as far as Christmas in the Village, some years back, I know the Chamber did something like a pub crawl where, and with our social district, I, I'm not aware of the Chamber doing this, and I was just curious if, if you or Mr. Lee may have some insight into that if it's being done this year and if not, if there's anything maybe that the DDA or, or the Village might be able to do to help support local businesses in conjunction with our new social district to get people to visit local businesses while they're, while they're out and about.
Yeah, I'll let Alex answer to the specifics on Christmas in the Village, it is our goal that the social district would be reopened for Christmas in the Village though, to have that open. We have the permanent signs coming in, I've, all of our streetlights are ready to be installed, the bases are in, the powers to the bases, so I anticipate for Christmas in the Village, although, all the streetlights and traffic lights will be installed, so we should be in good shape to, to have the social district active at that time.
Has, have, have you or Mr. Lee heard anything from, from the Chamber relative to any organized effort around what we're, what the Village is doing?
Any other questions specific to infrastructure project or? I always take no questions as you're in full support of what's going on, so appreciate
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Agenda Item Number Eight, so we do have a couple action items on the agenda this evening, so this is gonna result in a public hearing, so we do need to open the public hearing and that is gonna need a, necessitate a motion to open, support, roll call, vote, we'll have conversation and then we will close that with another motion, support, roll call, vote to close the public hearing. So, I will call for a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Delong, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support from Mutcha. And we'll need a roll call, Secretary DeBolt, please.
Schenkel.
Yes.
Mutcha.
Yes.
Manchester.
Yes.
Wartella.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
DeBolt, yes, and Delong?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Durkey?
In the public, is this is a, been initiated by the Village of Vicksburg, what we have historically, and this goes back many decades, possibly even forty years in the making, but we have eight or nine properties within the Village that are non-conforming to the use. Basically, the, they're commercial businesses that are operating and, and this is the first of those eight or nine that is in the best interest of the Village to correct on, on paper. It's no impact on, on any of the businesses they've been operating, but this is part of, as we went through the recodification and looking at our overall zoning maps, Mr. Durkey, and as we go down this journey, we'll go into detail about each of them, at, in the fir-, tonight is a property that we published and notified the public. I will say that we did not have any inquiries at Village Hall, we did receive a letter of support from the schools and, and, and that will continue into next month as a site plan comes in front of the Village, but I did want to inform this board and, and the public that this was initiated by the Village of Vicksburg and there's multiple properties that were, were in the process in probably the next six months to check the list off and, and get those corrected. So with that, we'll have Bobby Durkey give a presentation from staff.
Thanks, Jim. Morning Planning Commissioners. So, I'm guessing you guys are forwarded, I see them there, the information I provided, so I'll just give a brief overview of what's in the letter, a little bit of background of the rationale that Jim's talking about and then any questions you guys have. So as Jim mentioned, this is a Village-initiated request to rezone three parcels from C2, which I mean from R2, which is single-family residential to C2 commercial. For reference, a lot of downtown is zoned C2. As I meant, and the, the three parcels are 409 South Main Street, which is the funeral home itself, and then there's an adjacent parking lot, which is technically its own separate vacant parcel, and the third one is a current residential dwelling at 114 East Park Street, which if you've been over there, you can see how the funeral home creates an L around it and the, you know, one of the sides is then the alley and the street, so it, it's essentially a square off of the corner. So, as Jim mentioned, these are similar to other parcels such as the gas station on Highway Street, longstanding commercial use is zoned residential and you're right, Jim, it does go back, Jim found me a couple of years ago an old zoning ordinance from the nineteen-sixties and, you know, all those blocks were zoned residential even back then. So, it, it, earlier this year, I know that the, the funeral home had kind of reached out with some general zoning questions about a potential expansion and then I had to relay the, the news, that sounds like a great idea, however, there is a zoning conflict, but the things Jim were talking about were kind of already on my radar. So there's, there's two parts, there's A, the, a business seeking to expand in the Village, so, you know, and the, the historic land use from a staff perspective, but B, also as a way to introduce this idea to the Planning Commission and the public before doing a big scattered public notice for all these other properties that may be out there. So some staff considerations on this decision, A, it's a longstanding use, non-conforming, the business is gonna be greatly inhibited from doing anything under the current zoning and I did, I should mention as well, there is a dwelling unit in the building up on the second floor, so that also is still conforming with the C2 zone, funeral homes are permitted in the C2 zone and those were all the things I looked at. So it's an expansion of the existing use, recognizing that we are, you know, the house would be a change of use, but this is the background there. So and then in reference to these other commercial uses, whether it's a gas station, a grocery store, parking lots, AT&amp;T buildings, we have this scattering of more intensive uses in this part of the Village from downtown to Highway Street, almost Highway and Richardson. And then I also include, so I had included a map of anything that was zoned R2 that was either an apartment building, a parking lot, or a commercial use. And there's a very similar map, which then includes special uses and civic uses, because the civic uses aren't, is generally guided by zoning and neither are the schools and then churches are special uses. I wanted to highlight more of these more intensive uses scattered throughout there that, you know, on, on the, from up above, it might look like, why is this C2 zone going here, but it's kind of establishing that there's a lot of non-single-family homes in this, in this vicinity. And then lastly, going to the master plan, the master plan highlights these areas of the Village outside of our downtown, these older in-town mixed uses, and the recommendation through that is the creation of a workplace zone district. The creation of a workplace zone district and some of the more larger non-conforming issues in our older parts of the Village is, that would be a tall order, that's, that would be a much bigger project. So in, in the short term, in the more immediate term, in absence of a more, of a more comprehensive zoning analysis, staff's rationale is to, you know, almost surgically look at where could we at least make it conforming to the current code and that's where it all comes back down to this use and this business at this time, kind of introducing that idea. So, while that block is zoned single-family, it is on Main Street and the master plan does call for that parcel to be residential. However, looking at the master plan, I do note that it was identified as a commercial parcel in the existing land use, perhaps it was known, perhaps it wasn't, but my counter to the future land use map is that given the tools in the zoning ordinance around today, this is the, the best option in absence of the creation of a whole new zone district. Cause my, my staff opinion is it would probably have to mold into a split between mixed use and single-family or, or multi-family housing, it would be, it would be a bigger fix for the bigger downtown, but we have a lot of these commercial uses and as I said, this is the, the first of those. So that was the background, that was the how and the why and why staff brought it forward, recognizing there was a development. It was suggested to be a staff rezone and then the applicant would take care of obviously the site plan review and any future steps and they were on board with the request before, you know, this was moved forward. So I have some of the attachments in there, the, the letter kinda covers more of this or the memo covers more of this in details and if you guys have any questions, I'm here.
Yeah, I got a question, you know why you chose to go C2 and not C1? Cause C1 actually covers funeral homes. C2 opens it up to hotels and other larger things, do you know why that was decided?
The, the C1, and, pardon me if I'm wrong, I, I don't know if the intensity of the, the setback table, the coverage, if that is as strict or, or less strict, I should say, and then the residential dwelling unit that existed there, C1, a mixed use, isn't clarified in the ordinance.
Do you also know why it was decided to allow the residential one to be lopped into with this?
The proposed development is a building addition on that where the house is today.
But going by our site plan, that is currently not in our site plan as being, our zoning as being considered for that. This property was sold in 2018, I believe, and where we reached out to it 2018 about the possibility of changing or what our site plans were at that time, because if we were not reached out about that, then it's not really a hardship, then it was known that that was bought as a residential property. So to me, I have a harder time saying you can combine all this when that is on its own, it stands on its own, it's a residential home and it was bought that way, so it's not really a hardship. So and usually when we change these, it's a hardship. So I was kinda curious why we were gonna lump that in to a commercial when it really opens it up and we're, that's the heart of the town, the Village, which we're looking at doing in historical area in there for homes too, so I just don't see that fitting what we're doing.
The, putting it in was in relation to the proposed expansion of the business and in this one, hardship may not be the correct term, a hardship would be for typically more of a variance request where the applicant is seeking relief from the zoning, where this one, I guess it's less of a hardship request and more of, as I said, the, the earlier introduction of this idea of these non-conformities and knowing that they, there was a planned expansion and it's been made very clear that, you know, until this is rezoned, this technically cannot occur.
I wish though, we would have been noted, I mean, I, we knew nothing about this until the last meeting, so if they had reached out, we probably should have had, we've got a new member on the board, things have changed, we haven't had very many in-person meetings, I think we really should have taken a meeting to readjust what, we have taken tons of time and tons of money to set up the layout of how we wanna go forward, how the Village is supposed to be, I mean, the mill is a prime example, we took months and months of going back and forth to decide how we were gonna allow that to be zoned to protect the citizens and protect the Village and this to me just seems like it's just a here, let's just throw this at us and, and let's vote on it and I, I just, I'm kinda shocked that it was thrown at us at this way and that the Village, it's with the Village decision, which I've never seen Village take on the responsibilities of a business before. of a business before that's privately owned.
If I, a couple, couple of points and excellent questions, Mr. Manchester, is first off, on the village initiating it, again, I can't stress enough, this, this timing-wise, I would concede is why we're starting with this property references site plan review. We have known about the multiple non-conforming properties within the village for quite some time now. And it is, it was on staff's goal list to get corrected. There were some pieces of the puzzle we wanted in place, predominantly the recodification done and some other avenues. This, the, so I would, I would like to clarify, we're not helping the business out by doing this. This would have been done regardless on the property of the funeral home. Specific to the question of the house internally, staff, one of the reasons and foundational points that we're recommending the approval is that house that we know is part of a site plan development completes that block, meaning that that entire, that it would, and that's where we included the one map on the key with the parcels proposed.
But that'd be no different than they purchase another home next to it and come back and say, well, I want this to be part of my commercial property too.
Well, I, I can only address.
I don't know what can protect some homeowner from this continuing when we have decided where our zoning is for what we want to see and what we don't want to see.
Yeah.
And I just don't see how you can take a residential property and just decide to lump it in. I agree, we need to straighten out the residential for the funeral home, and that probably should have been done when it was purchased, honestly.
That could be, but if I, if I finish the talking points in only our thought process on the property, completing what I'm saying is that half block, however you want to look at it, or continuous property. Tough for me to comment on what hypothetical happens in the future, but under the scenario you just mentioned, if anyone were to purchase a residential property, the only one connected is to the south, and that would have to go through the same process. And as I started out, it might not get staff approval, and it's, I would not, I would not commit either way until it was a reality. But for the parcels that are in front of us and we've presented tonight, and you're right, we provided this information to the Planning Commission last month. I haven't entertained a question on it from a Planning Commission member. So we brought it forward, we published it, we've had no.
I just got this information just this week. I don't know what you mean by, it was presented to me a month ago.
Well, we said that this, this was coming.
You didn't say what was coming, you just said it was going to be looked at. I, it was not addressed that we were changing a residential to a commercial. I had no idea until I got this Sunday at 11 o'clock. That's when I got this pamphlet and information. And I, I think that it needs to be looked at and addressed. We have, like I said, we've taken a lot of time in considering what's zoned, we're setting precedents here.
That, we are not setting precedent.
We most certainly are. We are, we are changing a zoning for no reason at this time.
But we need to clarify, based on the law, we are not setting a precedent.
Yes, we are.
With all due respect, sir, that we, we are not.
How are we not? When we are changing, when someone is not even asking for this change, they have not come to us for this change.
If, if, we're not setting a precedent because each issue that comes in front of this governmental board is separate and distinct to itself. There is no legal precedent being set. On, 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 again, I can only provide why staff is presenting it with the recommendations that we are in our thought process behind it.
I just want to make sure that everybody here is aware of what C2 means. It means that it can be an autom repair garage, it can be boats, equipment, can be personal recreation, it can be a hotel, it can be a motel, it can be a greenhouse, it can be a sign, it can be childcare. This area can be used for, what else do I have on there? For motel restaurants, signs of cordance, machine shops. This land now, by changing this, it can be, we have no control anymore of what is, can be put in there. It's, yes, they, we want to change it for this, but down the road, if they decide this doesn't work for them, and there's not good parking, or they don't want to do it, they can sell this property to anybody they want that can fit in there. It is now a commercial property in a residential area. I have a real hard time with putting a commercial property in a residential area and allowing it, because we have no control when it's changed to commercial property. If they sell it, they can sell it to whoever they want that can fit in that location and use it and make a hotel, do whatever they want to. Is this not true?
Yes, but in the manner, we're already dealing with a property of non-conforming use for many years.
And we, and we can correct that, but we do not have to correct it by adding a home property that is separate from that right now.
I can respect that, in your opinion on that, but to your point of the C2 classifications, that wouldn't change for the existing two lots that are utilized.
You're changing it all to C2. So that means that whole area, if they build this building they want to do, they can turn around and sell this property to whoever wants to do whatever commercial they want to do.
But, but the existing properties that the funeral home is currently on and has been non-conforming would be C2 as well. What I'm trying to say is, that would, your, your statement there will, will be the same for, for the location of the two lots, the funeral home and parking lot currently are on.
Correct.
We, right.
Correct. If you change any of it, you are, but I'm also saying that, you're right, that is granted, that was put in eighty-some years ago and was never changed. But it also was sold in 2018, and those people were aware that that, what the zoning was.
I think.
And, and when you buy it under that zoning, that's what you get unless you want to change that zoning. And that's why we're here to review this.
Correct. And, and I think we're saying a lot of the same things, but what I'm saying is, if we look at the existing property.
Right.
In the recommendation to appropriately have that corrected from a non-conforming use and to correct that, that as I think you and I both agree on, should have been done years ago.
Sure, it should have been. I think it should have been done when the property was sold. Personally, I don't know how you could sell something that's a residential property when it was a business the way it was.
Okay, and, and so we're saying, if that correction was to take place, we also have the additional information now, and again, I don't want to, I'm respecting everything you say, I just can only give you our conversation as a staff.
But until we see the site plan and review it and determine, because right now, we have basically seventeen parking spots for that business now. So if you build this other, you're really needing another thirty-one parking spots.
The, the, the schools have.
I know the schools said that, but you know what's going to happen, it's open parking on the streets. That is a residential area, and those roads fill up. I live in that area, cars fill up, and it's a one-way street, why the funeral service is going on? And by adding another business to there, it is going to get even worse, and the traffic's going to get worse. People are not going to walk down to park their car at the school when they can legally park in the street during regular hours. They're not going to do it. They have the right to park there, they're going to park there. So people are going to park all the way up and down Main Street.
And, and that.
In a residential area.
That would be something to be discussed during the site plan review.
That's why we need to sit back and review our site plan instead of changing this at this point and not reviewing what we have set in stone and we said we were going to stick to.
We wouldn't come forward with a non-conforming site plan if the zoning didn't allow it. So there, if the zoning doesn't allow it, we will not be coming back with a site plan for non-conforming use. We're prepared next month on that site plan review to explain to our public and this board on the parking issue, it would be no different than what we do if Sunset Lake holds an event, we put temporary no parking signs across the street. So we have no parking. It was an educational component that years, and I'm talking about three years ago, when apparent event occurred there, they would park across in the neighborhood heading towards Sunset Lake Park. We put no parking signs and have solved that concern. Same way we did is we put on by the Speedway gas station in the maze of, of road detours this summer, when we found out that that was an issue on that street, people parking on it, we put temporary no parking signs. To your concerns, I'm a hundred percent confident that the issues you bring up would not be an issue by the use of a temporary no parking. And that can be part of the site plan review and requirements on the development, that if there was a funeral, that the temporary no parking signs would be placed in those roadways, not to detract from the residential neighborhood, ensuring the people went to the school building who has signed off that they would allow the parking there. And I think that, that the funeral home would communicate that with each of their events that take place. The other point, I think, and I think it's just a vernacular, but I want to make sure it's clear, we're not talking about an additional business. We're talking about, about the funeral home's ability in the site plan review to expand the services provided for a funeral. So their, their request is not a, an additional, or a couple of times it's been mentioned, second business. That wouldn't be it. So again, what motivated staff was, we have a non-conforming use, we know a site plan's coming up, we looked at the property, looked at the issues of the neighborhood, and that's what formed our motivation to recommend that this overall, one clears up the non-conforming issue that's been, and also with the additional site plan review coming forward, makes sense to complete that block in one consistent zoning. And I'll have Bobby answer your question specific to C2 and, and future uses or a site plan review and that type of thing. I think you mentioned several uses that it could be in the future, so.
Just, it opens it up to a broad range of things. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of what C2 allows to go in there in the future.
You are correct, Rick. Whatever is a permitted use would be permitted here. And as part of my consideration to other zones was how intense it was. If, looking at this particular location, whether it was traffic, utility abilities, fitting more parking, the, the agreement with the school really changed the game, because obviously their parking requirement does change. And by ordinance, they can use the parking within, forgive me if it's three hundred or six hundred feet, but it's within the requirement. Where this is, basically what I thought was, what becomes the market reality of that? Of course, it could become an oil change shop, or you know, whatever the zoning code allows. But as part of my evaluation of, you know, it was either notify this building, the property owner that this isn't permitted, the development couldn't move forward. But looking back to the larger work, because there's two issues I look at in the central part of town. In the zoning ordinance, we have an R2A zone district which is not mapped. And what the R2A zone district is, it is a residential zoning that allows greater intensity of, you know, how many people per acre and reduce setbacks. But what we have is an R2 zone, which requires much greater setbacks. So you have a lot of density or size issues that don't match what's there. And how does that tie into this commercial use? Of the commercial zones available today, it's a very Euclidean zoning ordinance. It's either industrial, residential, commercial overarching. That's a, so one of the surgical things, as I call it, what we did downtown was just a slight ordinance amendment to permit those residential uses upstairs, because I think we counted seventeen to twenty-one second-floor residential upstairs. And I think the solution to that is, at such time, or if such time, we do look at a mixed-use zoning ordinance. I think a lot of these properties, whether it's this one or future ones, should staff or other owners move forward, they're kind of the targets for that mixed-use zoning. And the mixed-use zoning would, I think, restrict your more intensive commercial uses, like a body shop, auto sales, gasoline sales, because your building code would restrict that, you know, as well. But I envision, per the master plan, a workplace that allows, you know, the kind of place where someone can live and work at the same time. But we just don't have that option in our zoning code, which may create some bigger setbacks, not put the C2 standards, which gets you closer to the property line, allows the more intensive uses. You're completely correct on that. But of the options available, that was what I thought was best to prepare.
The one thing too, and not, we don't have to jump there, but it's something to, we obviously have Steve and Jenny here, the owners of that property, I'm not going to put them on the spot, and, because it's two different issues. And I know you know this, Rick, we're talking about the zoning first tonight. But, but you've mentioned a couple, and if need be, in there, I mean, I think Steve could explain it, what he's looking at to use this piece of property, how it benefits.
I can tell what it's going to be used for, and that's why I'm questioning it, and I'm questioning the timing of it, and I'm questioning why we want to change the zoning on a, on a residential property in a residential area.
Yeah, I think you.
That's what I'm questioning, basically, not, not the existing building and the existing parking that's been there sometime. I agree, we need to clear some of this up. My biggest question is why we're adding the residential, we're expanding the commercial area by, by changing the residential home into a commercial.
Correct. And that is with the series of dominoes that took place. The owner of the same property now wants to expand a gathering spot for people who are celebration.
But you have to have a hardship for that, and this is not a hardship. I just want to make that clear, it is not a hardship. That is a residential property, it was bought as a residential property, therefore it is not a hardship. We have gone over that several times, what's a hardship and not a hardship? Thank you for your time.
Director Durkey, if I might. As Mr. Manchester mentioned, the C1 versus C2, would you elaborate in thirty seconds why C1 does not work again, just for us, so we have that consideration as well? Because I don't have that in front of me, the differences. And I guess on top of that too, could the C1 work for them? And you mentioned something about the residential use, but is there an alternative besides the C2 that could work? Or is it C2 or bust?
Well, C2 is the only one that permits the mixed uses, so with it being a mixed-use structure. And pardon the delay since I kind of did that earlier evaluation, the C2 allows, strangely enough, a hundred percent lot coverage, but it requires a ten-foot setback. So, but it allows zero setback. The C1 standards, I believe, are less intensive, where the, this is a very small property to put this use on. Where the C1 standard, the allowance, whether through coverage or use, didn't match up. And again, the mixed use was a big part of it, because there's that residential unit, and thinking of the nature of the use that's there today, it is very live-work sort of thing.
If I may? When we started talking about this, I believe seven years ago, I believe it was seven years ago, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked a lot about C1, C2. When we, I was the president of the DDA at the time. We looked at all the properties that were downtown. We had at that time, retail places downstairs, apartments upstairs, we had maybe ten at the time that people were living over retail spaces, and they were not zoned appropriately for that to be occurring. So at that time, we started working on getting. So at that time, we started working on getting all of the stores downtown to be rezoned to allow residences over commercial places, which is exactly what is going on in the funeral home. And it was, I believe, built in 64, 67, when was it?
1933.
1933. So there has been a home over that business for almost 100 years. There are, in the map that Bobby gave us, there are multiple properties that have the same thing going on. This, just to me, from what I understand, and I know tonight's my first night on the board, but it's not my first rodeo. There are a lot of properties that this needs to be corrected for to allow the existing use that's on that property to be there legally under our zoning requirements.
Yeah, and we've discussed this in several times. And as I've stated, it's not, it's not the existing funeral home. It's the residential. I have a big concern of adding a residential, taking a residential out.
And from what I understand, what Jim said was that they cannot submit a request for a nonconforming site plan, that it has to be done in order for a conforming site plan.
Well, it's gotta be changed to, it's gotta be changed to C2 before that can even happen. And that's what, that's what I want to make sure everybody's aware of.
Right, and in order.
Once it is changed, then they can request it, but I'm not going that far. I'm backing up to where we're at right now. I want to make sure that everybody's aware that we're gonna change a residential.
To C2, like we did downtown already.
Downtown's different, that has nothing to do with residential, that's downtown. So let's not get confused with what's downtown and what's a business.
If I can ask, just so I want to make sure, Mr. Manchester, you and I, do you understand, we're not talking site plan or that property, I'm talking about the existing funeral home, why staff is recommending the C2 for the existing use of the funeral home with the residential?
The two parcels, the two parcels, yes.
That, why we pick C2 over C1?
Yes, when Bobby explained it, yes, I understand that.
Okay.
And looking back, that was not correct. The dimensional standards are similar. It would have been the mixed use and the type of building.
I just questioned that.
The type of use, I mean, where, I imagine having that component is important to that industry.
Okay, no, I don't, I just had to question, because I'd noticed on C1 that they actually had funeral homes stated in there. But with a mixed use, I get it.
Hey, this is DeBolt. So to clarify, the existing funeral home and parking lot are C2 as of now, right? Or they are not?
No, they're zoned residential. This is one of the eight or nine properties in the village, village-wide.
That's clarification for me.
But I think it's also important that our residents understand this is something that we've all inherited. Even the most senior tenured person on the planning commission was nowhere part of any of these properties. This goes back decades, and we're just trying to get it cleaned up so we can avoid these issues in the future.
Okay, and the vacant, or the property at 114 Park Street is a vacant house right now, correct?
Correct.
So, and how long has that been vacant?
Well, I turned, but it's been vacant for, I think, since it was purchased.
It's pretty much an abandoned building right there. So we're talking a piece of property that is just sitting there doing nothing. So, that's all my comment is on that.
Do we know that for a fact? Who, do we know who the owner is?
Well, Steve, yeah, the owners of the funeral home bought the house. Steve and I had conversations, and he, I'm juggling a lot of things in my memory, so I will stand to be corrected. I believe, I don't know if his initial talks were before or after the purchase of that house. We had conversations because of one of the trees on the village was responsible for. And it was during that time that he mentioned how he wanted to be able to expand gathering for people during a celebration of life event. So we, and at that point, and I think that goes back a couple of years, it was pre-COVID for sure, and it just fell in line when we started, when the we here is Bobby, Durkey, myself, and Andrew Horn have had multiple formal meetings, if you will, looking at these different properties, the zoning issues and that type of situation. And we've always talked about the funeral home. And I guess that's, again, where I can just say, our conversations internally were our recommendation, the existing multi-use property and parking lot, if that was C2, and it completes this block, that's why we're standing by our recommendation that overall, it's good for this property. In the site plan review, I think we'll be able to answer the concerns, and they're very good concerns. And I actually really appreciate Mr. Manchester's input on this. So that, again, I'll leave it at that. That was our thought process and the dominoes we put together for our recommendation.
And as a reminder, the planning commission gives the recommendation, this will go to the village council for a final decision.
Bobby, I swear I was listening, but I can't remember what you said, why we're not doing C1 versus C2. Can you just repeat that, please?
Because the, in the talks at the funeral home, there's a residential dwelling in the building. So essentially, it's not just a funeral home use, it's a funeral home with a residential use inside of it. So if it is C1, it's still going to have a level of nonconformity.
And if you haven't been in there, the residential use is upstairs. It's a second story.
It's actively being used.
Yes, yes, it's being rented out. And has been, I think, continuously. I.
Mr. Durkey. You mentioned in your letter that this was on the master plan, future land use that calls for commercial, is that correct?
No.
No, I'm not trying to trip you up, I'm just trying to read through your memo here, so, and just make sure.
The future land use shows this as a resident, as all three parcels is residential. The existing land use map did note the two commercial parcels. It's just one of those things, thinking back to my own time on the planning commission, was that missed? Is it the intent to, for the village to return this to residential? So recognizing that fact, that's kind of after that where I start to state, of the zones available, that's how I came to this. But it's future land use map, residential, existing land used, commercial, and then the staff rationale is using some of the recommendations from the planning and zoning table in the master plan for some of these mixed uses. We haven't, the big recommendation there is create a new zone that matches the existing form and uses. We don't have that.
We do have time for citizens' comments for the rezoning. Again, if we do have any participants, please state your name, your address, and you have four minutes.
My name is Steve McCowen, and we are the owners of 409 South Main and 114 East Park. And I just, one, I would like to start by thanking Jim and Bobby for their guidance, their conversations we've had, and the detail they've gone into helping with this rezoning. I've been here in Vicksburg since 2003. I had the privilege of working for Sheldon Durham and Marilyn Durham until they both passed. And the one thing that I can share with you and reassure you on is none of these properties will ever be motels, gas stations. They will be only used to take care of our people, our community. And Sheldon Durham, when I first came to town, was very proud of Vicksburg. And he made sure I knew that anything you needed, you could get in Vicksburg. And the last two years, I've gone to funerals at places outside our community for our community. And each one of those families I've talked to, asking if there's something we did, and they said, no, you just don't have the space that we're looking for, for the type of event we would like. And that hurts, so when you consider hardships, depends on whose hardships we're talking about. And I would like for our community to have a place where they can be proud of when they have a service. So when we look at the rezoning of 114 Park, that's the only place we have that we can actually do something on that property. That house has been vacant since three years before we bought the business. It came with the purchase of the business, when I bought it from John Durham. It was vacant for three years prior to that. We've been trying to figure out what we would do with it. We actually thought about, at times, renovating it. There's, if you were inside that building, you would know, there's nothing habitable about that building. So as we look at ways that we can help our community and be able to take care of our community, that's the only place we have to be able to do that. And so I respect the questions and that you all have. And I just want to reassure you, our intent is not to have anything but a funeral and gathering and a place for our community to be proud of. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have about the site plan, the reasons for it being rezoned. I can promise you, I don't know all the details, the legal detail to all that, but I can tell you what we intend to do. That building has been a funeral home since 1933, and it won't change. If we have people that keep going outside of our town for that kind of service, it might, because we might have to close. Is that gonna happen right now? No. But we don't want it to happen either.
Yeah, that's kind of my question is, you say that, and I agree, I love having it there too. I always have, and it's a great thing to have. But the location of it is, and my concern is that you may decide that this doesn't work for me down the road, and you do decide to move or sell. And now it's changed to a commercial, and it's invaded into what is considered an R2 area. And it's, that area is being looked at as historical homes right now. We have a gal that's been actually doing, so that there can be funds and money that actually you can get for restoring your older home. And now we're asking to invade that area, and it is going to be a lot of traffic. It's gonna be more, the roads are gonna be blocked. That's something you're gonna have to really consider, and those are things we gotta consider if we're gonna allow something that was not looked at in the zoning. We've spent a lot of time on these, where things should be, where they shouldn't be, and that's where I have a hard time with. I agree with you, it's, I think it's a great business, I really do. But it's not a hardship, that's not what a hardship is.
Well, I can debate that with you, but I.
Now, from a legal standpoint, it's not.
I'm not, I'm gonna choose not to do that, but I respect your opinion on that.
Right.
But you're looking at a 100-year-old building and the services that we need to be able to offer our community, we can't do that inside there, but we want to keep.
But you knew that, you knew that when you purchased it too in 2018. That's the question, is when something's repurchased, it has to be evaluated what it is. When I buy my house or my property, it's zoned what it is, I can't buy it and assume I'm gonna change it.
The, I do want to clarify for the board, a rezoning does not require a hardship. With the issue tonight in front of the board is a rezoning. And that, again, as I've told you, the thought process staff put together.
How is that not a rezoning for a hardship? Because it's being asked to be rezoned to change to a commercial because he needs more room to expand his business?
I can only advise this board what the thought process of staff was. To rezone property within the village does not require a hardship to have that area rezoned.
So basically, our site plan is useless, we can pretty much do whatever we want to do down the road.
No.
That's what our job is, is to review this and go over it. And basically, what you are telling us, we have not been prepared, we have not had time to look this over. I would like to make an emotion tonight that we table this so we can actually have a discussion and look at what our future plans are. What do we decide? This was kind of thrown at us, that now all of a sudden we have these nonconformings, and we need to start changing them.
Okay, and a couple of points. Tonight's issue is.
Jim.
Sorry, Mr. Manchester, was that a motion you just made right now?
I would like to make a motion that we could table this.
Are you making a motion currently, or are we gonna be continuing discussion? Just, there's some clarity I need in that.
I think we probably should make a motion.
So are you making a motion, or are you?
I would like to, I would like to make a motion, yes. To table, to table this until we can further discuss what our zoning issue, what we want to do for zoning.
So Jim, I'm gonna need some clarification on this.
If, if the chair has recognized the motion, no, we're in a public hearing. Okay, you haven't taken citizens' comments yet from the other side. The chair under, would have to accept the motion or table the motion until the appropriate time. The motion will need a second for it to continue. Then there would be conversations and an eventual roll call vote on the motion. But right now, you're in a public hearing, talking about the issue, and the issue is only rezoning. It has nothing to do with a site plan. So that would be on the standard of the motion. I do have comments from staff reference how many ti, we've been, we have talked historically in my five years of employment about the nonconforming use properties within the village, and that this would be coming forward and ultimately going to the council. But specific to the motion, we're still in the public hearing. We had one member of the public speak for. You might have other members of the public here to speak for. Then the next agenda item is to speak, not in support. So I'm not, maybe Mr. Manchester will self-table his motion and make it the first thing coming out of the public hearing.
It's fine, I didn't, I didn't understand that. Yep, that's fine.
So, and everyone should know, there's no decision made during public hearing, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So do we have any more citizen comments for the rezoning? I will call for any citizen comments opposed to the rezoning. Is there any additional comments or questions from the board for staff on, in this public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Planning Director Durkey. Mr. Durkey, I acknowledge that this is not a site plan review, first off. I do have a question though, is this a dedicated alleyway?
To the east?
Yes.
Yes, that is an alley.
Thank you.
And if, may I make one more comment before I go back? Is it, might I address some of Mr. Manchester's thoughts? The, typically, a rezoning is clarified, the standards for a rezone is often spelled out in the zoning ordinance. That is not the fact in our zoning ordinance. Typical reasons for rezonings usually be, has there been conditions that changed? Is the zoning consistent and harmonious with the land in which it sits and the land around it? Will the zoning create an adverse impact on those surrounding land uses? So those are, you know, generally what are looked at as some of the considerations of a rezoning. There's nothing that says a hardship has to be in the zoning code. A hardship must be presented, you know, as part of the rationale. So just a little clarification on that item.
If there are no more questions or comments, I call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mucha, do we have support?
This is Wortella, I second.
Support from Wortella. Mr. DeBolt, can you? Support from Wortella. Mr. DeBolt, can you do a roll call, please?
Shankle?
Yes.
Mutcha?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
Wortella?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
DeBolt, yes. And DeLong?
Agenda item number 8B. This is the rezoning of the three parcels of land at the southeast corner of South Main and East Park Street, including an unaddressed parcel, which is a parking lot, 114 East Park Street, 409 South Main Street, Michigan 49097, AKA the McCowen and Secord Funeral Home, being combined as .53 acres, more or less. We need a motion to, a motion for approval, support, then we have comments, and then we'll do a roll call.
Holmes, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the parcels on the southeast corner of South Main and East Park, including the unaddressed parcel, 114 East Park Street, 409, as well as 409 South Main Street.
Mr. Holmes with the motion. Do we have support?
I support.
Ms. Long, any comments from the board?
Mr. DeBolt, this is just a support motion, correct?
This is a...
This is a support motion from this board to be presented to the council.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further comments? Mr. DeBolt, will you take a roll call, please? Yes.
Mutcha?
Yes.
Manchester?
No.
Wortella?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
DeBolt, yes. DeLong?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that passes, motion passes 7-1.
Thank you.
For support to the council.
If I, if I can, and it will be reported as such to the council, so everyone's aware, the council meeting on November 15th, nothing connected to this, was previously moved to November 22nd. But not only the supporting, but Mr. Manchester, your concerns will also be relayed to the council.
Thank you.
If I can, I just want to clarify, what I'll do, Mr. Manchester, is on my staff summary to, and I'll send it to the entire Planning Commission, what is going forward to the council. And then if you have any comments or concerns or additions that you feel need to be inputted on that, I'll be happy to take that and make sure it's relayed to the council.
Okay, we have agenda item number nine, downtown development authority. Mr. Mallory, you're going to present on finances and the draft audit.
Yeah, really, the finances, and we've not had that much expenditure so far this year with all the projects downtown. We are exchanging emails right now because there's a supply chain issue on the tables that were approved by this board and the council, but they certainly will be in place by next spring. As far as, we did receive our draft financial report about two weeks ago. Both DDA and overall Village, very positive. Just to inform this board, we'll receive the final copy of the audit and financial report should be the first week of December, no later than the second week, so it can be filed with the state of Michigan. In the public presentation of those results will occur at the third Monday or second meeting in January to the council. So we'll have both the Siegfried Crandall, who puts together the financial report, as well as the auditing firm give a public presentation on. But we're very pleased with the, with the results of that. I would like to, well, I'll answer any questions on the finance or the audit, and then introduce Mr. Lee, reference what he's going to speak about. Hearing, no, I've asked Alex, I think it's important that we start to get the word out that we're full throttle ahead on Christmas in the village. To Mr. Holmes's point, had excellent comments from Rapt in Gratitude, and Oopsie Daisy, and Silo Chic on their event this weekend. I'd like to publicly recognize the contractor, Milbacher, who organized to get, though they were gravel the streets prepped, they brought in a light bank for the businesses, and they did the most improved area to the sidewalk to create that, as well as to get some base coats down into some parking areas. But in talking to both the owners of those businesses, they were absolutely thrilled by the turnout of citizens, and confirmed that their sales were equal to a car show weekend. So they were very, very excited on that. So, and we're looking forward to Christmas in the village and a sense of normality and, and larger downtown. So with that, I'll, I'll introduce and have Alex Lee come up, and then he's very nervous that I'm going to touch one of these buttons over here, but
Well, as Jim mentioned earlier, there will be Christmas in the village in Vicksburg in 2021. It'll be on Saturday, December the 11th. There will be a parade, there will be horse carriage rides through the village, a tractor pulled hay ride through a vastly expanded Christmas card lane. Santa's workshop is returning this year. There will be children's activities, an indoor farmer's market, and the committee is currently working with a couple of potential additional locations for crafters and vendors to be part of it as well. And of course, we'll have the annual lighting of the tree ceremony. Right now, it looks like that will move just a little bit to the east on North Main Street, because Oswalt Park is in various stages of disrepair, and will continue to be that way until we refurbish that park. Which, by the way, I don't know if everybody here knows, but we did a crowdfunding through patronicity through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and we took a big shot. We went for their biggest match of $50,000. We received it. So we're very happy about that. We're going to restrain the hours a little bit of Christmas in the village this year, so that activities will be more bunched together, so families can enjoy all the activities with one visit, instead of driving to a location in the morning, coming to something else later in the day, and then returning for the parade. We really hope to have an event scheduled up early next week, or fingers crossed, at the end of this week. But understand, there are some logistics this year about where things will be because of some fire suppression issues, because of some other use of buildings, because of some current construction for a wonderful bakery coming to town, which have made some buildings we've used in the past unavailable. But we've had a lot of support from our community in that regard as well. I want to give some quick thanks to our major sponsors, Frederick Construction, Paper City, H&amp;H Feed and Grain, and the Main Street Pub. And I should mention that the Main Street Pub, in addition to being a major sponsor, has given up their banquet room for Santa's workshop this year. We hope that will be a very good deal, because we're going to have those very special people that do all the downtown decorating, really make that room look great. But I'm sure Mr. Moore could have scheduled a few activities over the time we'll be in there. So we are greatly appreciative of that. The only other comment I'll make would be in regards to Mr. Holmes' earlier question about contact from folks who are going to do other activities for Christmas in the village. We stand ready to work with anybody that has a good idea that wants to enhance what we do. And I'll answer any questions.
Alex, this is DeBolt. You talked about moving the Christmas tree lighting, we've talked about moving that down. We're not taking the original tree out or anything, are we?
Um, tell me...
The original tree that we light up.
Oh, the tree in Oswalt Park?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said Christmas card lane.
No, the tree.
No, the, the tree that is in Oswalt Park.
Right.
Will be in Oswalt Park this year during construction, and will be in Oswalt Park next year after we've refurbished the park.
We talked about, you just mentioned, we're moving it a little bit to the east, but the tree's still in the park.
If you want to bring a shovel and try to move that, then, Mr. DeBolt, we can talk about it. But I think that tree will be exactly where it is during and after the reconfiguration of Oswalt Park.
What Alex was talking about, John, was where the people stand in view, the tree being lit, they won't be in the park, will be utilizing Main Street, Prairie Street, and the set, so the people will be to the east.
All right. Lastly, do we have any member comments?
This is DeBolt. I just wanted to back, or reiterate for Mr. Holmes. When he talked about the pub crawl and stuff, our committee in the, in the Christmas in the village mainly directed our Christmas parade at the community of fameliness downtown. We did all leave that to the Chamber of Commerce to organize the pub crawl, which is a great situation for downtown, and now with the new social district, it would do that. In part of our committee, we've discussed letting the pub owners take care of that themselves. If the Chamber of Commerce would like to step up and, and chair that. One of the reasons, too, is when we published all of our flyers and put them in the schools, we had to restrict, we had to do two different flyers when we first originated it, because we were part of the pub crawl. So we couldn't have the pub crawls advertised in the schools. So that's why we eliminated it at that time, like four years ago, with the committee. So if that explains it to you, if you'd like to, if somebody here would like to reach out to the chamber and ask that, or to the five pubs in town that it does do, they could, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to organize something for that, so.
John, I appreciate the comments, and mine, my question to Mr. Mallory, that Mr. Lee also shared information, I really was just, I was, I mean, I've known in the past we've done it. I know this is a family event, and I just wasn't curious, I was just curious if there's any discussion about it, because it is great, you know, to see people in the community, whether it's the families all together there early on, or the adults later on. And we've, we've got this wonderful thing called a social district, and, you know, it's opening back up, and I just, I just, was just curious if anybody was considering it. So thank, thank you, John, I appreciate the background on that.
It, it takes a lot of work for the committee to put this parade together, and then on top of the other stuff. So we, we kind of taken that away from us. We were all, it's a lot of work to put it all together and make it work, so. And if anybody wants to help out, we'd, we'd take volunteers for every position. So you're welcome to say anytime, come on over. We got a new member, so I know I can count on her.
What time, do we know what time the parade is going to be yet?
The parade itself is at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. The, we have, most of the downtown events during the afternoon will be from like 2 to 5. And then, but it'll be all coming out in our flyer once we finalize, and we get a little more information on what the road situation is and the routes and things like that. But we're planning a 2 to 5 ceremony, that's the, give it from 5 to 6 to get all the floats lined up again, and then the parade start at 6 o'clock again.
Cool.
So. Is that right, Alex?
Any other member comments? Time is 8:19. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.